Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Budget Public Hearing. Will the clerk please call the row?
Miller.
Here.
Hagan. Commissioner Hagan. Kemp.
Here.
Overman.
Did you say my name? Merman?
Not yet, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Oh, usually I'm right after Kemp. We're creatures of habit here.
Commissioner Merman?
Obviously, I'm here.
Commissioner Overman? Smith?
Here.
And White?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you very much. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget. Would you please, Mike, please, Mike, if you're not speaking, put yourselves on mute, please, your microphone's on mute? Any feedback? Thank you. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on millage rates and the budget prior to the board approving two resolutions setting tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for the fiscal year 21. The millage rate in the budget will be adopted next Thursday, September 17th, after a final budget public hearing. In a moment, the budget director will read into the record the increase in the aggregate fiscal year 21 tentative millage rate with a rollback rate. We will also receive a brief discussion regarding the status of the tentative budget, after which we will take public comment. At the conclusion of the public comment tonight, the board will discuss any potential changes to the budget. Mr. Brickie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Kevin Brickie, Management Budget. The calculated change in the tentative aggregate millage represents a 5.13% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under discussion tonight reflects in part normal inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation and affordable housing, statutory and contractual commitments, union contracts, technology upgrades, the sheriff's office, and certain other county needs. With that, I will now provide a brief overview of the budget. Commissioners, the tentative budget the board will vote on tonight reflects the county administrator's recommended budget for fiscal year 21, as amended by updates and corrections that have been made since the recommended budget was delivered on July 15th. The FY 21 tentative budget is balanced. Additionally, the county continues to maintain its general obligation AAA bond rating, and the tentative budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with your strategic purpose. I'm going to share a PowerPoint. The FY 21 tentative budget is $7,97 million. That is a $447 million increase over the FY 20 budget, or 6.7%. The tentative budget is $385 million increase over the recommended, and that's mainly due to the inclusion, since the recommended, of some future utility bonds and their related transfers, some increased carry-forward funds, particularly the CARES Act funding, is an increased carryover of $71 billion. So higher insurance reserves, some additional increases for constitutionals, and some new grants, some of which are CARES-related. Tonight, of course, as the chairman announces, our first public hearing, where you will adopt the tentative millages first and then the tentative budget. And next week, we will have our final public hearing on the 17th to adopt final millages and budget. Today, you will also have the opportunity, after public comment, for discussion and perhaps flagging. We do have some one-time countywide funds available of about $2.5 billion. I would stress that it's countywide, and it's one-time funds. Commissioners could identify items for inclusion or exclusion from the budget. We'll accumulate those items. The board can discuss. And we do ask that any items that are flagged tonight, that you would hold off on voting on those as a final decision until the September 17th public hearing, because we have an ad that's going into the paper, and we want to maintain that ad. A further item for September 17th is that we would request that you would suspend the $812 million transportation plan for FY 21, as you did for FY 20. And with that introduction, I recommend that you accept public comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brickie. We're now moving to public comment. Our first speaker is Gerald White. Gerald White?
Chairman Gerald White just dropped off the call.
Okay. Patricia Bean?
This is Patricia Bean.
Yes, ma'am.
I am very concerned with the proposed... Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Yes. Okay, I am very concerned with the proposed budget increase, and I'm wondering if the county has considered cutting various line items in the budget. Examples may be reducing library services, public debt program, maybe reducing the schedule for recycling, or have you considered raising revenue from other sources, such as county sales tax? My tax bill is getting almost unaffordable because of, by the time you add on the ad valorem property taxes to the non-ad valorem taxes, I'm approaching $3,000. It's just I'm on a fixed income that's not feasible for me. So I'd like to know what other options are being considered, other than these budget increases.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. James Davison?
Yes, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, I can, thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners, I want to congratulate you on another balanced budget, but most of all, on preserving your AAA bond rating for the county. Property taxes will be increasing by about 9%, I think it's 8.7%, and tens of millions of dollars. But the county's transportation plan is being advised to be waived for the second year in a row. So roads will not be built. Schools dependent on those roads will not be built, especially in South County. And roads won't be repaved. Vehicles will be damaged, higher maintenance, and possibly accidents caused. Has anyone done a cost-benefit analysis of what the delay in the road construction and repaving of roads will cost the county in future budgets, or the citizens and their maintenance costs? More importantly, temporarily raising or decreasing the county's bond rating to a AA or a AA? A cost-benefit analysis comparing the increased cost to the citizens of delaying the transportation plan versus the decreased bond rating should be considered? But you haven't done that, but you still have your AAA bond rating. In the middle of what may be the worst pestilence and economic downturn in over 90 years, you have a AAA bond rating. When many people in the county are at risk of eviction, losing their homes, have lost their jobs, savings depleted, and their expenses rising, and their credit ratings crashed through no fault of their own, you still have a AAA bond rating. Would it have been too much to ask to have a list of the road projects that were supposed to be built over the last two years, listed on today's budget agenda, that are going to be delayed if the transportation plan is waived? Could you show how much each citizen will have to pay in extra car maintenance and gas because of the transportation policy delay, or the school locations in South County that won't be built because roads weren't built? And the greatest pandemic and economic downturn in 90 years is not enough for the county to spend more of its reserves on its citizens and risk a temporary downgrade in their bond rating? Please tell the citizens of Hillsborough County what is. In the recession of 2009, transportation funding was stopped. And then you talked about a backlog and paving, and how we needed to have a sales tax in 2018. Transportation has always been at the top of every survey when looked at, of our citizens' concerns. Why must it always be transportation roads that suffers during these times? Why not the county's credit rating? This is the 21st century, and with artificial intelligence and big data, we can do better than this. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. James Keen?
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is James Keen, and I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Metro Inclusive Health. And I'd like to acknowledge and thank you all for your support of our historic, of the preservation of the German-American Club as part of our expansion to increase access to healthcare for all individuals at an affordable cost, with a focus on LGBTQ community and access to healthcare. Thank you again for your support, we're very much appreciative. Good evening.
Thank you. A. Warden? Initial A. Warden?
Yes, thank you. I am concerned that you are considering an increase in property tax during this economically stressful time, while other counties such as Pasco and Sarasota are not implementing increases, from what I have seen. Isn't it enough that we are the highest sales tax in the state? Please consider how your decisions are impacting not only homeowners, but also real estate investors who provide rental housing opportunities for tenants. All of these expenses, particularly property tax increases, get passed on to the tenant, making it burdensome on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
I think she's gone, ma'am.
A. Warden. Thank you.
Did Gerald White come back on the phone?
No, sir, he did not.
Okay, thank you. Let's close with the public comment section. We're now going to go into board discussion. Members, before we start this, let me say something here. I heard, you all heard, what staff said, that we had, I think it was $2.5 million more dollars in our countywide fund. That's what I heard, countywide fund. Be of mind for that. You know, this is a pandemic year that we have no, we did not expect. We have no idea of what's going to happen in the future. We are going through a fiscal year 21 budget, doing okay. But my understanding, and you all have heard, of talking to staff, fiscal year 2022, and I won't be here, but I'll still be in this county, is going to be a very tough, tough year. Extremely tough year. And some of you will be here and have to deal with that budget. And there's two of us on this call, maybe three, I think, Commissioner Hagan called in, that was around when we had to deal with some serious, serious budget issues. So be of a mind for that, that $2.5 million. I know it sounds good, but maybe you need to tuck that away in reserves, so you can utilize those dollars in 2022, when you're looking at a very dismal budget. It's going to be tough, believe me. And some of those things that you have to do probably in 2022 are going to be gut-wrenching and painful. Been down that road many, many times, hated to do it. So before you start looking at, oh, we got $2.5 million, let's start spending here, spending there, take into consideration of what you're going to have to look forward to in the fiscal year 2022. It's going to be tough. It's going to be hard. It's going to be painful. And you're going to sit there and make decisions that probably will keep you up at night. But that $2.5 million may not sound like much, and it could probably make a world of difference. Just wanted to say that. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I take what you've said to heart. I do think that we should consider giving at least the lion's share of those dollars either back to the taxpayers this year in the form of a millage adjustment, or placing it in reserves for a future year. I do have a couple of, in the grand scheme of things, small flagging items that I'd like to break forward. I do know that Mr. Brickie has asked us to not do any final adoption of these tonight, but I would like to present them both in the form of a motion to incorporate into the final recommended budget that comes back on September 17th for consideration.
Commissioner White, we're not going to be voting on any flagged items tonight. You can ask to be there, and we're not voting on any flagged items tonight.
Okay, you don't want to have motions and votes to have them incorporated in the recommended budget? For the 17th?
Mr. Brickie, what does you say concerning that, when you give your presentation?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we do not want to have votes to change the budget due to the fact we have an ad that's already gone to the newspaper for next week. What we have said is that we would certainly collect flagged items for consideration next week.
Okay. Well, I'd like to put both these on the record for staff to bring to the meeting at the 17th for a final vote. The first would be for the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance. I've worked closely with these folks on issues in the past. They have a lot of hard-working folks on their board with expertise in many different disciplines. I do understand that they have some needs over there. Of course, they benefit a struggling segment of our society. So I would ask that a flagged item of 25,000 come back for the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance. Also, another nonprofit that we've worked with in the past and have approved some appropriations for in the past is the Plant City Food Bank. They do a lot of good work, not only in Plant City, but in some surrounding unincorporated areas as well. This year, they have a need for a pickup truck with an eight-foot bed for deliveries and whatnot, a forklift for dealing with inventory, and some other smaller needs. And my understanding is that those needs total about $100,000. So I'd like to ask for an item for $100,000 to come back for the Plant City Food Bank, which I'll add as another nonprofit that services a struggling segment of our population, and we do all know that people are struggling right now.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to thank you for your comments. I think they were well said and well taken. We should be approaching this $2.5 million with as much conservative principles as possible to save for next year. Those of us that went through the recession, when we came on the commission in 2010, it was not fun at all. And, you know, we didn't really have to do any layoffs, but we did have to strategically, you know, surgically, you know, figure out how we could reconfigure things to make our budget work. So I agree with you, and actually what Commissioner White said, if we could give even just a small break back to the taxpayers, I think it would be, again, well-taken, because we had to increase quite a few of our fees this year to keep up with the demand of the growing population here in Hillsborough County. Commissioner White, I'll support your items. I think that, you know, especially the Plant City Food Bank, sometimes Plant City gets a little forgotten in the mix, and I think that would certainly be appropriate to go forward. I don't know if any of the CARES Act money can help on that item, and maybe staff can talk to you about that later. But I think we've had, good comments were made. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I also, when we met some weeks ago about the budget, and we, in a just feeling as though I should not put anything forward, I had decided that some months ago because of the COVID emergency and the needs. But having had some identified possibilities, I did originally want to put forward this proposal, and I think it's so appropriate to put forward in these times especially. And that's what I would like to ask for, and I'll tell you a little bit about this, $100,000 for the Sweetwater Organic Farm. And I think it's a great investment for the future and investment in food and land at a time when it's so important to us. It's an 11-acre, not-for-profit, community farm that's been in operation for 26 years in town and country. It was the first community-supported agriculture farm in the state of Florida. It's a treasure in our community, and just two years ago, it was nearly sold and developed. But a dedicated group of volunteers who forfeited any salaries or anything stopped that from happening. I never even knew about it until after the fact. Some of the things that the farm does, it's a not-for-profit that does farming education and training, advocacy, farmland preservation, and stewardship. It's 11 acres, six leased at this time, and it's invaluable with 26 years of certified organic soil. You can't find that anywhere else in Hillsborough County, it's an incredible asset. For 26 years now, and it will happen again this year, thousands of schools' children, about 7,000 to 8,000 kids a year, spend time at Sweetwater to learn about farming. They have a farm day summer camp for children, as they did this year, as well as farmers' training, both locally and across the country. It's also been an incubator for farming and food-based industries here. It spawned other organic farm and food industries, including some multimillion-dollar food-related companies now in this area. During COVID times, it was one of only two farms that the county recommended for organic food purchases, and they did have a SNAP dollars program there, where you could get twice as much fresh food for your SNAP dollars as anywhere else. And it exists, importantly, in the middle of a food desert out in town and country. It's created great value and economic opportunity and education for years, as well as fresh food. And now they're looking to expand. They want to create an eco-farming district. They want to open a co-op grocery store and a school where they can teach organic farming. And Commissioner White, you may be especially interested in this. The executive director, Chris Kendrick, is looking into creating a community farmland trust. But he's been studying farmland trusts in other states, and many other states have farmland trusts and are preserving farmlands in this way. And he's been looking at it. Florida does not have such a program, and I would love to see that expanded, not only at Sweetwater, to keep this incredible community asset, but also see it expand in other parts, especially in East and South County. So again, I'd be looking for $100,000, and I think it's really an appropriate investment during COVID times and for the future.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. And what I like about what I'm hearing so far is these are things that will help people in our community, and I think that's an important part of our examination process when we take a look at the budget and look at how we move forward on, not only setting reserves, but also looking at how we deploy resources. Putting people first is always a good thing. And we do have a looming crisis in our county on several fronts there. And there are three initiatives that are imperative, in my mind, in terms of really helping our citizens adjust to not only what's happened to us in the last year, but moving forward with some of the initiatives that the board has approved in the past. First being affordable housing. The second being our efforts in the area of human trafficking, and then third, in area of healthcare. As we're well aware, we have a tremendous shortage of affordable housing in our county, and the Affordable Housing Advisory Board has been investigating the establishment of a community land trust to stimulate the development of additional affordable housing units in our county. There have been extensive discussions among the Ahab Board Subcommittee on the first steps, and it would be helpful to the Affordable Housing Services Department, as well as to the advisory board, to have resources to hire and design and set up a proposal to create a community land trust, whether that be internal to the county or through a nonprofit organization that needs to be stood up to make this happen. It helps with fight gentrification in our communities, it helps hold communities together, and it helps us best deploy either surplus assets we have or assets that are available to assist with developing affordable housing. In that area, I've asked for approximately $50,000 in order to get that set up and work it in concert with what the city also is doing at the same time, so that we can work tandem to each other in moving forward in the area of affordable housing. The second item would be to examine our equity policies, which we're doing with what the board did approve, thank you very much, to move forward on developing an equity profile. But we do need to look at the processes and the programs that address disenfranchisement or, and are poor, and look for opportunities to create a level playing field. I know we've set aside dollars for the actual profile, but we will need some additional resources to the amount of $25,000 in order to assist in the outreach work and further develop that profile, so it doesn't just sit on the shelf, because there's no point in actually working towards that to make that happen. The last, the third item is in the area of human trafficking. As many of you know, we, the county's commission on human trafficking, was selected by the NFL to act as a convener group for the upcoming Super Bowl. And while the funding from the NFL will be used for a public communications campaign, we need to have resources, not only to further a sustainable human trafficking program, but also to develop a, or stand up a hotline. We're looking at a partnership with the Crisis Center to do that, but it's going to take additional resources to do that. The total of those three different areas' efforts in human trafficking would be approximately $125,000. And then lastly, of course, I want more money for Metro Health. It's a great program. It's, you know, it's in a historic building. I'd like to see where we could actually help them with capital preservation dollars for the historic building, but I'd sure like to suggest another 50 going in their direction. So I'm glad that we will actually have a chance to really consider these items, learn about them, because each of us have done our own homework on our pet projects. But I'm interested in learning on all the projects for consideration next week, and I'll stop there.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And, you know, I agree with Commissioner Overman that I'm hearing ideas from the board to help our community and help our citizens in this time, and still leave money for reserves. I would like to ask you all to consider at our next meeting to, that we add to the funding line item for Heart. Funding transit has been identified... I don't know what that is. Funding for transit has been identified as a priority of our citizens, as indicated by their vote for the transportation surtax, with 45% of that going to Heart. But since that's been held up and in court, Heart is really struggling to provide service throughout the county due to their small budget, and they've had to cut services to the bone. And so my ask, I know we all agreed to take that from $0 this time, although it had been $2.3 million in the last couple of years, and we had previously committed to continue with figures in the millions to help them assess mission max. I know we agreed to take that this year from $0 to $50,000, but I'd like to add $200,000 to that. It would be much less than the county has given them in recent years. It would be much less than the county has given them in recent years and less than we agreed to help them out with when they had to cut services three years ago, but it would be a huge help to that agency in myriad ways. They have a long list of unapproved but unfunded needs, including something that is, you all know, dear to my heart, and that is the need for paratransit vans at $100,000 each. They really need three of those, but if we could, if we could help with two of those and then $50,000 towards the dire needs they have for repair and maintenance to keep the system rolling, that is, that's what I would ask you to consider when we meet again. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, let me ask you something about heart. Heart received $39 million from the CARES Act. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, and they lost $1 million at the Fairbox. And they are the lowest-funded transit agency for any metropolitan area our size in the country, and they have $107 million of unfunded needs. And I'm asking to plug one little hole in that long list of unfunded needs and help out with transit, which is a priority.
But they still receive $39 million in the CARES Act. And they received today over $3638,000 for a few refunds for the GNC buses that they bought. So what are they going to spend $200,000 on?
Okay, two paratransit vans cost $200,000, and that helps our disabled population with transit throughout the county. And they have, they have big needs that we had agreed to help them out with. So I understand, I understand that we disagree, but I'm hoping that the board will consider this when we come back.
The big need that heart board needs to do is bite the bullet inside how they're going to find a dedicated funding source for heart. That's the big need. This county should not be funding an agency like heart. I mean, we've done this for over two or three years, and if heart's going to need funding, it's time for the board to bite the bullet and find a dedicated funding source for heart in its own. I mean...
Yes, sir. I proposed that. I proposed that we put an initiative on the ballot and couldn't get support for it at this time, but I hope to do it again.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've listened to Commissioner request for flagged items, I'm coming up with a total of $675,000. So I'm just doing some math real quick. That would leave just over 1.8 million remaining of the surplus in the countywide general fund, assuming that those all pass. Recognizing that some other needs may arise, say there's still 1.5 million remaining. I'd like to ask Mr. Brickie real quick what the countywide millage rate would have to be adjusted to, to lower the countywide general fund by 1.5 million.
One moment, please.
Mr. Chairman, while Kevin is doing that calculation, just a reminder, Commissioner White, that this is one-time money that is available at this time, and a reduction in the situation is perpetual is an ongoing. So I just wanted Kevin to be sure to acknowledge that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. That 1.5 million, as I calculate currently, would be a reduction of .0146 mils. And as Ms. Wise mentioned, that would be an ongoing reduction.
And can you tell me again how we realized this budget?
Commissioner White, hold on a minute. Someone has their microphone unmuted, and we're getting a lot of feedback. If you're not speaking, please put your microphones on mute. Continue, Commissioner White.
Can you tell me again how we arrived at the $2.5 million budget surplus, what the revenue sources were?
Yes, we had some increase in ad valorem due to the property appraisers July 1 estimates compared to what we had in the recommended budget, and that was about a $2 million increase. We had some one-time increases due to fund balance estimate changes, and that's where the bulk of that $2.5 billion, that's where really all of the $2.5 billion comes from, because we had the additional, as we mentioned in July, the additional requests from the clerk's office for $3.7 million. But those combined, we came out with the $2.5 billion. But it's really from the one-time sources from the increased fund balance that has really made that available.
Okay, so tell me how the increase in appraised values, because that, unless we're expecting a decrease in appraised values over the next couple of years, I mean, that would be a recurring impact on the budget, right?
The increase in appraised values is a recurring impact on our revenues, so long as they don't decline. That is true. And we had about an 8.5% increase in values, and so that, we did get that increase. The $2.5 million is what was available since the recommended budget.
Right. Okay. I tell you, I, you know, I realize that it would be a recurring impact, but, you know, I am reading information out there that suggests that, you know, we could see folks continue to struggle, you know, for a couple of years out maybe. So I would be inclined, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time to make a motion that we decrease that countywide millage rate by .0146 mils.
Mr. Brickie, how would we handle that?
That would also go on the flag lists, and that could be considered at the next public hearing on September 17.
Now, do we?
So, so we would not take...
Do I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me?
Do I still have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Do we have someone from the county attorney's office in the meeting? Because it's, we have an action coming up that's the adoption of the tentative millage rates.
That's what I was about to talk about.
So I would, I would imagine that our advertisement said that we could levy up to a certain millage rate, so I don't see why we couldn't make a decision tonight to go ahead and reduce that at millage rate, but I could be wrong.
The ad requirements from the Florida Department of Revenue is that we advertise the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget. And in order to have that done, it has to be a few days before the next public hearing, that would be Sunday, and in order to have it into the paper, we've had to already get it to the paper. So at the final meeting, a vote can be done to lower those tentative millage rates.
Commissioner White, you still have the floor?
Well, you know, we used to make adjustments to the millage rate, and I, it seems like I recall it being at this stage of the game. I, you know, I may be recollecting wrong, but do we have someone from the county attorney's office on?
Ms. Beck?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I don't know if Sam Hamilton is on. We both had some trouble getting bumped off, but because of the extreme sensitivity of the, put my camera on, of the, of the need to have the Department of Revenue advertisement treated exactly as it needs to be according to statute, my best advice to you would be to, you've indicated that this is an issue you would like to address, but our best advice would be to vote on it on September 17.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that an item come back on September 16 to reduce the countywide millage rate by .0146 mils. Do I have that number right, Mr. Brickie?
That is correct, and I understand that you, the intention is for it to equal $1.5 million.
Correct.
And by calculation, I would say of that exact millage rate is preliminary, but we would confirm what the equivalent millage is for $1.5 million.
That, that's fine. That's fine.
So let me ask you a question, Mr. Brickie. What the motion, what Commissioner White wants to do, will we not be, we will not entertain the adoption of the millage rate tonight?
No, we would. We would, we would go ahead with the tentative millage rates as are in the resolution tonight and as is in the background for you to read.
Okay.
And then we would consider that lower rate. In past years, the votes to lower the millage rate by a small amount occurred at the last public hearing.
Really? Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White, you still have the floor?
Oh, I yield the floor, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'll put my hand out.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. And I totally appreciate anybody and everybody's idea and desire to lower tax rates to our citizens. But as an economist, as a person who looks at interest rates, as a person that looks at the fact that we've had to suspend $812 million worth of transportation projects that actually are necessary in order to allow our continued, our county to continue to grow and to address the deficit that we have in an area of South County and East County that needs schools, and from what we heard this week, apparently believes that they can't build them because we don't have the infrastructure in place to allow them to build them on safe roads, which I somewhat question, but we might be able to go there. The idea of actually reducing the millage rate or keeping it at the current rate that we have is going to put us in a very difficult place, even more so if we do see the other usury taxes that we depend on for roads, resurfacing, and supported services to our citizens in a more difficult position should our economy not recover at the rate that we wish it would. I believe in dealing with the reality of the fact that we've got serious economic conditions that are not necessarily going to recover at the rate that we would like them to. And while our budget staff has done a marvelous job at showing us what they project to be significantly lower revenues in next year and the following year, to Commissioner Miller's point that he made earlier about dealing with very hard decisions, while I do, would like to use a little of the extra we found, the extra was found because a lot of our millage rate was based on a very booming economy we had last year, not on the economy we have this year, and certainly not on the economy we're going to have the year after that and the year after that. So while I do appreciate the idea of being able to lower millage rate and Commissioner White's request, I do understand it. I think it is prudent for us to set aside some reserves. I also think that it's really important to consider those things that are desperately needed for our citizens to move forward. So I, especially those that are most disadvantaged. So Commissioner Smith's item to consider helping heart with their paratransit makes sense to me. And their budget meeting is on Monday, so if you have any question about whether or not the CARES dollars kept them afloat, you'll hear that on Monday night at their budget hearing. And that's the only reason, I think, in my opinion, that they are still afloat and are able to provide services to our citizens. So I think it's critically important that we do look at minimizing our requests, and I've asked for several, and they're all in line with the things that we agreed we want to move forward on and our priorities, priorities to keep our county economic footing in a good place. And I'd like to see us continue with that effort as a policy decision. So I look forward to the conversation next week, and I look forward to learning more about each of the projects that were discussed. But I do think we need to be real about what we see coming down the road, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay. I see no more hands for the discussion.
Hey, Commissioner Miller, this is Commissioner Hagan. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have any items to flag. I just wanted to make sure that the clerk has me in attendance this evening.
Madam, Madam clerk, you hear that? Okay, they got you in there, Commissioner Hagan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Overman, your hand's still up. You have something else? You have something else? Okay, all right. Before adopting the millage in the budget resolution, we must publicly announce the following. Name of the taxing authority is Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.4695 mils. Proposed aggregate tentative millage rate of 8.9039 mils represents an increase, represents a 5.113% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. Let me repeat that. The proposed aggregate tentative millage rate of 8.9039 mils represents a 5.13% increase of the aggregate rollback rate. The tentative millage rate to be levied are countywide general fund, 5.7309 mils, unincorporated area municipal services taxing unit, 4.3745 mils, library services, 0.5583 mils, voted general obligated obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands, 0.0604 mils, voted general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation, 0.0259 mils. And at this point, is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution as presented by staff.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Now that the tentative millage resolution has been adopted, is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by staff.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, the second by Commissioner Kemp, I think I heard. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Date, time and place of the final public hearing will be 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 17, 2020. This hearing may be attended through electronic media by following instructions at the following link, hcflgov.net/budget. Again, that's hcflgov.net/budget. Seeing no further business to come before us tonight, everyone be safe, be careful, and we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a good night, everybody, and a great weekend.
Good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.